Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I want to welcome you today. And before we start our official meeting, we have one honorary resolution. I'm going to turn it over to Council Vice President Andrea Jenkins to present the resolution, which is honoring an anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Council President. My name is Andrea Jenkins. I'm the vice president of the Minneapolis City Council. And I would like to invite up some members of the audience, Kara Lotosky and Cindy Booker, and any other folks that may have been involved in this work. Today, we're just recognizing, this is a resolution of the city of Minneapolis, recognizing the 50th anniversary of the 1968 Federal Fair Housing Act and declaring June 21st, 2018, Housing Equity in Minneapolis Day. And so, the resolution reads as follows. Whereas Minneapolis has always been home to people of different races, ethnicities, and economic backgrounds, and whereas, beginning in 1910, racially restrictive covenants began to be placed on property titles and homes in Minneapolis, and within a few years, large swaths of the city were reserved for the exclusive use of people of the white race. And whereas, in the 1930s, the Federal Housing Administration's Homeowners Loan Corporation, or HILAC? Linked race to lending practices, the federal government commissioned color-coded maps that delineated mortgage risk in different neighborhoods lending to the practice known as redlining, which dried up access to capital in neighborhoods that included people of color. And whereas, by 1940, most of the city's neighborhoods were off-limits to African-Americans to purchase homes, pushing them into specific areas. And whereas, residents of the old South Side and near North Side built supportive communities that were bound together by racial solidarity and racism. And whereas, efforts to end discrimination in housing included adopting state legislation, outlawing racially restrictive covenants in 1953, and the fair housing legislation in 1961, and community campaigns such as the Greater Minneapolis Interfaith Fair Housing Program. And whereas, as a culmination of the National Civil Rights Movement, and in the wake of the murder of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King in 1968, the United States Congress passed the Fair Housing Act to reverse decades of residential discrimination and segregation, and ushered in a new era of housing equity and racial justice, including in Minneapolis. And whereas, the 2008 global mortgage crisis further decimated African-American homeownership and housing security by targeting African-Americans and other communities of color with predatory lending. And whereas, in this year of 2018, Minneapolis residents face housing disparities as challenging as those 50 years ago, with too many people not having safe, dignified housing. Tenants of color being exploited, and homeownership rates for African-American households are still the lowest in the nation. And whereas, in Minneapolis and across the region, policymakers and community leaders are making affordable housing a top priority, and are working towards inclusive, community-centered processes to address the true barriers to fair housing. And whereas, tenants and community organizers are mobilizing against unfair housing practices by utilizing tools stemming from the Fair Housing Act, but also building power on their own terms and pressing for solution-based community needs. And whereas, over a dozen organizations are coming together to present Racism, Rent, and Real Estate: Fair Housing Reframed, a series of events exploring the past, present, and future of housing equity in Minneapolis, which will be kicked off at Sabatheny Community Center on June 21st. And whereas, the Housing Equity Events will educate Minneapolisans about our largely unrecognized history of housing discrimination. And whereas, the Housing Equity Events will engage and surface knowledge from community members who have been impacted by the housing challenges and discrimination. And whereas, the Housing Equity Events will connect past racist policies and practices to current racial biases that impact housing. And whereas, Housing Equity Events will explore the benefits and the harms incurred in the name of the Fair Housing Act. And whereas, the Housing Equity Events will broaden the discussion about housing by humanizing the issue and making it current and accessible to real people's lives. And whereas, the Housing Equity Events will catalyze conversations that change the grand narrative and build political will. And whereas, the Housing Equity Events will translate awareness into action. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby declare Thursday, June 24th, 2018, as Housing Equity Day in the city of Minneapolis. So, I want to give you guys the opportunity to just maybe talk a little bit about the upcoming series and the events that will take place at Sabatheny Community Center.
Hi, my name is Cindy Booker. I'm the executive director of Sabatheny Community Center, and it's a privilege to be here to honor our community staff and board. Sabatheny is more than excited to have two events of the series, the opening and the closing, and I know it's something that the community is really looking forward to. It's important to have stories with the data, to learn from the past, so that we can make an impact on the present and future. And now, I'll turn it over, so you can hear more about the series that will be going on.
Thank you, everybody, for supporting this resolution and this really important work, and especially to Council Vice President Jenkins for bringing the resolution forward. My name is Kara Lotosky. In the series, I would encourage everybody to look for the details online. It's called Racism, Rent, and Real Estate. There's just two of us here now, but there are over a dozen organizations and individuals that are part of the whole series. And we will start by looking at kind of the history of racial segregation and housing in Minneapolis, and through the series, start to shift the focus to the present, and then what do we do in the future. And so, the events, again, will be kicked off on June 21st at Sabatheny, and they will take place through the summer, and really in September and October, and culminate on October 25th. So, Google Racism, Rent, and Real Estate, and find the whole series. So, thanks again for having us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I would just close with saying, you know, affordable housing is a really critical issue in our community, and as you can maybe ascertain from the reading of the resolution, it didn't just happen organically or overnight. It was very intentional, and so, we must be, as policymakers, very intentional about reversing those trends. So, thank you, guys, for doing this work, and I look forward to being a part of the series in the future. Thank you.[571.29][571.29][applause][572.29][572.29][applause]
All right. With that, I will call our meeting of the city council for June 15th to order. Again, I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council, and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano is absent. Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Present.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami is absent. Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
President Bender.
Present.
There are 11 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. I will note that Councilmember Worsami is absent because of the celebration today of Aid al-Fatihr, and he's missed, and we will offer him and the community blessings and best wishes today on the holiday. We have our agenda before us. We have two amendments to the agenda, which should be at your desks. First is an amendment offering, I am offering on behalf of Councilmember Worsami, to add an honorary resolution declaring June 20th to be World Refugee Day in Minneapolis. And second, we have an amendment from Councilmember Goodman to add, under the order of notice of ordinances introductions, a notice for an ordinance to be introduced in the next cycle related to amendments to code provisions related to qualifications to apply for, obtain, or maintain a permit or license. Are there any further amendments to the agenda? If not, I'll recognize the vice president for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and our agenda is adopted. Next, we have the minutes of the regular meeting of May 25th, as well as the adjourned meetings from May 24th and June 7th. I'll recognize the vice president for a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved. Second.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and all of the minutes from the meetings are accepted. Finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. Is there a motion for the referrals?
So moved. Second.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and all of the minutes from the meetings are accepted. Finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. Is there a motion for the referrals?
So moved. Second.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and all of the minutes from the meetings are accepted. Finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. Is there a motion for the referrals?
So moved. Second.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and those matters have been referred to their proper committees. Next, we have, in our order of business, is the reports from the standing committees, beginning with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, presented by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 15 items forward for approval this morning. Items 1, 2, 3, and 4 are new licenses for businesses. Item number 5 is a food manufacturer license revocation. We're actually withdrawing the revocation as they've paid their taxes. Item 6 are liquor license approvals. 7 are business license approvals. 8 is business license renewals. 9 are gambling license approvals. 10 are gambling license renewals. 11 is a license settlement conference for Aqua nightclub. Item 12 is a rental license reinstatement, as is 13, 14, and 15. And I will note that items 12 through 15 are all former properties owned by Spiritus or Ballas or Steve Friends that are being relicensed to new owners who do not have a financial entanglement with either of the previous gentlemen. With that, I'll move items 1 through 15 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the report of the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report has been adopted. Next, we have the report from the Enterprise Committee, given by the committee chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. From the Enterprise Committee for you this morning are six items for your approval. The first three are IT contracts for a solid waste information system, ServiceNow projects, and COBRA benefits administration, respectively, items 1 through 3. Item number 4, as I mentioned in committee, the whole, is an effort to create a master contract with the University of Minnesota and the city for research services and real estate access, both existing and new endeavors. And this motion authorizes the negotiation of those master agreements. Item number 5 and 6 are staff directions given in committee. Item number 5 is about our efforts toward a single point of access for data requests. And item number 6 is about compiling a state of data report from the Information Governance Policy Committee. Both of those will come back in September of this year. I'm happy to answer any questions. And I move all of these for approval.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, presented by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward six items for consideration today. The first is a resolution which would authorize the Department of Planning and Economic Development to execute loan agreements for our Minnesota Housing Finance Agency programs and the city's rehab support program. The second item is a resolution approving the Home Improvement Program participation agreements. The third item is approving a loan of $1.5 million for Park 7 apartments. It's Affordable Housing Trust Fund re-award. The fourth item is authorizing issuance of a request for proposals for our HAPWA program, which is the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. Our fifth item is approving our tax credit program allocation plan and procedures. And the sixth item is a staff direction, which is asking the attorney's office to come back and articulate the authority and responsibility the city of Minneapolis has in regards to the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. And I will move all six items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee forwards 11 items today. Item 1 is the Bicycle Advisory Committee Appointments. Item 2 is the Minneapolis Stormwater Management Program and Report. Item 3 is the 34th Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project. Item 4 is the Contract with Alliance for Sustainability for Letter-Begone Event Services. Item 5 is the Contract with Progressive Rail Incorporated for the 61st Street West Reconstruction Project. Item 6 is the Contract with CHA Consulting Incorporated for Railroad Crossing Geotechnical Review. That's for the purposes of the 61st Street West Reconstruction Project. Item 7 is the Acquisition of Pipeline Easement in the Location of an Existing Water Main. Item 8 is the Grant Application for the 2018 Metropolitan Council Regional Solicitation for Federal Transportation Funds. Item 9 is the Bid for Upton, Vincent, and 51st Avenue North Sanitary Sewer Replacement. Item 10 is the Bid for Construction of Americans with Disabilities Act Pedestrian Ramps. And the final item is the Bid for Gerard Avenue Sanitary Sewer Replacement. Madam President, I forward all items for approval as submitted.
Councilmember Reich has moved the approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Ways and Means Committee, presented by the vice chair, Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. The Ways and Means Committee brings forward six items for approval this morning. Items number 1 and 2 are contract amendments to address unanticipated costs in already approved projects. Item number 3 is a bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center Kitchen Ductwork Replacement, accepting the low bid. Item number 4 is accepting the sole bid for high-reach equipment. Item number 5 is a legal settlement with Kristen Johnson. And item number 6 is a transfer of 2018 funds from the city coordinator's office to the Community Planning and Economic Development Department for a workforce development assessment for the renewable electricity sector. I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Fletcher has moved the Ways and Means Report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Ways and Means Committee, presented by the vice chair, Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. The Ways and Means Committee brings forward six items for approval this morning. Items number 1 and 2 are contract amendments to address unanticipated costs in already approved projects. Item number 3 is a bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center Kitchen Ductwork Replacement, accepting the low bid. Item number 4 is accepting the sole bid for high-reach equipment. Item number 5 is a legal settlement with Kristen Johnson. And item number 6 is a transfer of 2018 funds from the city coordinator's office to the Community Planning and Economic Development Department for a workforce development assessment for the renewable electricity sector. I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Fletcher has moved the Ways and Means Report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Finally, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee report from the chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee has three items for approval today. The first is the approval and amendment to the city's comprehensive plan for 100 North Third Street and 101 Washington Avenue North. The second is rezoning for 2535 Aldrich Avenue South. And the third is rezoning for 1,000 North Third Street. I'll move all for approval.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the ZMB Committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the reports from special committees, and we have a report to receive from the executive committee, from Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The executive committee met on June 13th, and we have one item to bring forward for approval, and it's an appointed position in the Regulatory Services Department Director of Operations and Engagement, one referring to the Ways and Means Committee, the appointed position of Director of Operations and Engagement, and two referring to the Ways and Means Committee, the salary schedule for the position. I move this item for adoption.
Councilmember Jenkins has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Ways and Means Committee, presented by the vice chair, Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. The Ways and Means Committee brings forward six items for approval this morning. Items number 1 and 2 are contract amendments to address unanticipated costs in already approved projects. Item number 3 is a bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center Kitchen Ductwork Replacement, accepting the low bid. Item number 4 is accepting the sole bid for high-reach equipment. Item number 5 is a legal settlement with Kristen Johnson. And item number 6 is a transfer of 2018 funds from the city coordinator's office to the Community Planning and Economic Development Department for a workforce development assessment for the renewable electricity sector. I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Fletcher has moved the Ways and Means Report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the reports from special committees, and we have a report to receive from the executive committee, from Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The executive committee met on June 13th, and we have one item to bring forward for approval, and it's an appointed position in the Regulatory Services Department Director of Operations and Engagement, one referring to the Ways and Means Committee, the appointed position of Director of Operations and Engagement, and two referring to the Ways and Means Committee, the salary schedule for the position. I move this item for adoption.
Councilmember Jenkins has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion?
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The Security and Safety Committee is bringing forward 11 items today. Item 1 is the Bicycle Advisory Committee Appointments. Item 2 is the Minneapolis Stormwater Management Program and Report. Item 3 is the 34th Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project. Item 4 is the Contract with Alliance for Sustainability for Letter Be Gone Event Services. Item 5 is the Contract with Progressive Rail Incorporated for the 61st Street West Reconstruction Project. Item 6 is the Contract with CHA Consulting Incorporated for Railroad Crossing Geotechnical Review. That's for the purposes of the 61st Street West Reconstruction Project. Item 7 is the Acquisition of Pipeline Easement in the Location of an Existing Water Main. Item 8 is the Grant Application for the 2018 Metropolitan Council Regional Solicitation for Federal Transportation Funds. Item 9 is the Bid for Upton-Vincent and 51st Avenue North Sanitary Sewer Replacement. Item 10 is the Bid for Construction of Americans with Disabilities Act Pedestrian Ramps. And the final item is the Bid for Gerard Avenue Sanitary Sewer Replacement. Madam President, I forward all items for approval as submitted.
Councilmember Reich has moved the approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.